Whatever the reason you need to borrow money, West Tennessee Bank can custom tailor a loan to meet your specific needs with a payment that will fit your budget. We have as many different types of loans as we have customers. West Tennessee Bank, a division of Decatur County Bank. We think you'll like us. Equal Housing Lender, Member FDIC.
Mr. Foreman Brothers, we'll go ahead and proceed with the meeting. We don't know if Mr. Palitsi is going to be here with water construction yet, but I do ask that we go ahead and approve the agenda with some flexibility in case he comes, so he can go ahead and address the board without even waiting to begin.
Motion approved.
I would have motion second, approve that. All in favor say aye. If motion no, then it is approved. And the first thing on here is going to be our consent agenda.
Motion approved.
All in favor of motion second, approve consent agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. If motion no, it is approved. And the next thing we're going to have is celebration. Okay. Go around.
Well, again, with our routine the last several months, celebrating some event, group of students or staff who have done excellent things to promote our school district, to give you guys the opportunity to see some of the great things that occur every day at our schools. I was, from our last board meeting being the end of the month, and this one coming back so quickly, I said, "Well, let me look and see what the paper has." And I want to just refer to that here, because when I was looking at the paper, and this was the week that I was viewing, here we are again, and as I officially say, we've got a front-fold article from the paper with one of our students that's on her lot. Now, I know it says 4H Ag Day, but everybody here knows that that's one of our students. And of course, you see the school board here, so here we are, front-page news with a good article from Mary regarding the content from last week. And then right underneath that, there's Chrissy Pennington being recognized for the Jefferson Award because of her community service with the food, or the soup kitchen at First Baptist Henderson. So, as I just kept looking, I had that epiphany moment in saying, "The one that I want to take this week to recognize is our Chester County Independent." Because for our school district, as you know from living in our district, we have no better friend in the media than our Chester County Independent giving us front-page news. And I'll say this, the majority of the front-page front-folds are positive stories. They don't sell as many papers. It's the negative stories that sells the papers. But our independent has made an effort, and not only an effort, a fulfillment of always putting the best foot forward. This is just the first page. You go throughout, especially during this addition with the baseball news and the other sporting events news, colored pictures promoting our school district, promoting our kids. I know, growing up in Chester County, I always split through the independent to see how, what they had for our athletics, you know? But now, as a superintendent, this helps drive the public opinion in Chester County to support our school district. And I just want to say to both James, who's here with us, and our familiar-based Mary, thank you for your service.
I'd just like to say that Mary does a great job. Every time we have a meeting, I'm sure she covered all the other meetings just as well. And I don't think anybody in Chester County doesn't know James well from seeing.
He just got us involved eggs.
Every sporting event in Chester County. But thank y'all very much.
Anyway, just, again, scrolling through this. We're not advertising, but I'm just looking into the sports edition. I mean, great pictures, great articles, and this is not just with sports, which everybody's very interested in, but with just a general outlook on the community, of your support for our school district and the work that is done. Great pictures, great quotes, and again, I can tell you a few mamas and daddies, as I look across these pictures who have bought and have put their investment in Chester County, independent, not only in Chester County Schools. So, we do thank you.
All right, the next thing is going to be delegations. And I'll be getting Mr. Lewis here to give that.
I'm becoming a regular.
Welcome to the meeting, sir.
Thank you so much. I brought a little backup with me tonight. We also charged her $5 a pound, Ms. Brianna. She's one of our seniors, and I think you saw a couple of our other seniors last night and the great things that some of our leaders in Vegas and the work that they do, is some of the speeches that were made last night. I was blown away. I don't know about you all, but very good. Back to what we've been talking about, the National Convention for Beta Club. We did go to the city meeting last Tuesday and received another $500. I don't remember what all I told you last time about, we hooked up with Beta Club in Lexington. Nikki Johnson is the sponsor up there, and we've gotten to talk a whole lot together. We've actually got 20 seats now on their bus that we're going to be riding with them and coordinating with them. Meal plan included now, all of that, extra meals that we weren't going to include for a cheaper price than what we had originally. So, really good. A hotel that's just beautiful. My wife was already looking at it online. She's going to be going along with me, and she's just like, "Wow, this is nice." So, with the donations we've received, $1,300, T-shirt sales $1,000, and student payments of $3120, we've raised $5,420. Still shy about $9,000 though, now including the meals. So, that's about the same number I told you last time when it didn't include the meals. We have $9,000 in our account. We could cover that, but we would like some help. And that's why we're here, to ask for some assistance in going on this trip, to reward the students that have worked so hard. The robotics, those boys have done, I think, four presentations now in town.
My motion, we need $5,000. That'd be about half of what. Well, we were looking at the line item. Shane and Glenn and I, along with Stacy, were looking at the line item that we would be pulling from, and right now, we have approximately $2,700 in that account right now. We were looking in the end promoting about $2,500, but that was the dollar amount without having to move any money out of the fund balance over.
Say, let's move some money.
That will require County Commission approval as well. That will require County Commission approval as well.
That's Monday night.
Let's move.
You got a motion?
Okay, we have a motion. It'll be for $5,000 or second.
I second.
Okay, and so, as far as discussion, then, we want to make this motion with County Commission approving that movement.
Yes, it would have to be approved here, and it would have to be before it could come into fruition.
Right.
It had to be both parties, both terms.
Okay, we need to prove. Okay, any other discussion? All right, then, all in favor of $5,000? Say aye. If motion no, and then we will bring up the committee to move that from general purpose.
I'll let you know after Monday night's meeting. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Hopefully that won't be any problem.
Now, you just have to win it all. That's the only thing.
Yes. Well, Lexington is actually going to help support our campaign, and they're helping out with this as well.
When he talked about, I said Lexington.
What are they competing for?
They are doing group talent. They have a group talent that they are taking to Nationals and competing with, so we'll be there supporting them for that as well.
Awesome.
I'll throw this out there, too. They have a booster club for their Beta.
Wow.
Yeah. We may look into something like that.
Well, the more you can generate, the less you've been asking for donations.
That's right.
All right. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
The next thing is going to be the drawing of staff pen and send it.
I didn't have the list of pictures of mine. All I have is.
No, it's not in there.
I went through it two times.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and get to the rest of our business.
We have, again, for our certified staff, we have 103 who had perfect attendance. That is no, those are no personal days, sick days during the month of April. We have 103 there, so we're going to select three from this. Okay, so, no drum roll, but here's the first selection. Number 91, who is?
Diane Stewart.
Diane Stewart. Okay, next one, number 99, Lisa Whaley. There's junior high, high school, junior high. Let's see what the third one is. 93, Misty Thomas, so that's middle school. So, we have those three winners. Again, Diane Stewart from the high school, Misty Thomas from middle school, and then Lisa Whaley from the junior. Okay? Then for our classified staff, we have 42 who had the same perfect attendance through the month of April. We're going to select two to be the recipients of the $200 gift card or added to their payroll. First one is number 32, Melissa Murley. She's custodian at the high school. And then, the next one is number 35, which is Carrie Perry. She is a school nurse at East Chester. So, both of those are the recipients. We'll inform those individuals tomorrow. Again, we're going to do this one more time, gentlemen, in the month of June to reflect May's perfect attendance. We should have higher numbers since May is a shorter month.
Next thing is going to be recognition of the justice board policies. Before I'm going to let you discuss that part first.
Okay. If you look at your board packets, the policy of 4.600, which reads "Grading System" as the title, has a section that I received information from Judith White with the TSBA, and it's number, or excuse me, it's page three, line 31, where at the time, the priority date for the FASFA, that is a document that has to be completed for students to qualify for the HOPE Scholarship. It says in our board policy that the priority date for that completion is May 1. As Ms. White referred, that there are several other applicable deadlines, so she wanted to take that specific date language out and replace it with what I included in your board packet. Instead of saying "May 1," that entire statement, the last one, again, or on line 31, that statement, will be replaced with "The students shall be made aware of all applicable FASFA deadlines." More gentle. So, as the dates change, our policy will be consistent. Okay? The second thing that was discovered in this same policy is that 4.600, the one you have that we just referred to in policy 4.700, the semester exam weight for the student's final averages are inconsistent between the two policies. The aggregate policy is 4.700, which reads that the state assessments can represent up to 15% of a student's final average, as long as you get the results back within five days of the last instructional period, or instructional date. Now, the projected date to get these results back for the state assessments is after we get out of school, May the 22nd. So, it won't impact any of our students' grades, but I wanted to ensure that both of our policies were consistent with the same weight of those semester exams. Actually, the memorandum that you have there from the TSBA reflects new laws that have yet to be fleshed out to give us specific guidance with how our policies need to adjust. But for the 1718 school year, the one that we're in, the assessments that had so many issues and problems with, they've taken the weight down to zero impact. It's going to be zero impact on the hours anyway, because the results are not going to come in with those, within the five days. So, it's moot for us because of our own year-end being May the 21st, and the results at the earliest are not going to come back till the 27th. But again, there was no guidance from the state yet on adjustment based on the new law, but it's really not impacting us with the memorandum as much as it is to align both 4.600 and 4.700. So, my recommendation to the board is to make these changes to 4.600 as guided by TSBA staff, and also to align these two policies to be consistent.
My motion, we accept. Have a motion, say, or any other discussion? All in favor of making the change in policy, say aye.
The next policy is, if you remember last board meeting, we discussed the changes in our background check procedures. It was not a policy change. We were going to be consistent with the policy as it is, but our practice is going to be different to have a quicker return on fingerprinting, and also the cost that would be initially paid by those who are applying and being offered, or considered to offer, these jobs or positions. Again, in our research in the board office, we realized that 5.106, which is the one that reads "Application and Employment" as the title, if you look on the one page, first page, starting with line 14, "The board shall reimburse the applicant." And then again, on line 15, talking about specific classified roles, that those roles shall be reimbursed, we would rather have the language match what we're currently doing with policy 5.118, instead of saying "shall," say "may." That just gives us a little room, because as I shared with you last month, we've had some people that have requested to be, like, substitutes. We go through the process, and then those individuals change their mind, or stop shot. So, we want to make sure that we're not investing in them to get the background check that we have to have for them, with people who are not invested in us, because this is, you know, substitute work.
That's right. Make a motion, Lee.
Second.
Our motion, second. We make the change in the policy to make. Any other discussion?
If they do pay for it and we do hire them, then we do have the option to reimburse them.
Correct. Now, there are some positions that by law, by policies, we're going to reimburse anyway without having to come back to the board to decision. These are the positions that have to have reoccurring background checks. The majority of our staff only have to have one check, but there are some that require it after a cycle of four or five years.
Any other discussion? All right, if anything, we make the change, say aye. If motion no, we change.
All right. I have asked Dr. Anderson to be here for this next one. I'm going to do the talking at first. Dr. Anderson can be available to respond to questions that you may have. I don't know if you gentlemen have heard any feedback, pro or con. Today, we're just talking about the pro, right? Not the con, about junior high, about the things that are happening at the junior high. But I can tell you from my perspective that most, if not all, of the feedback coming to me is very positive. They like the cultural changes. They like the emphasis on the work that's being done. Kids are enjoying going to school, and it's evident in their attendance policies are starting to pick up. Now, with the effort to see consistent improvement with junior high, she has sought to restructure her staff to help support that cause. However, the title of this one position that she is seeking that's included in here does reflect our board policy 5.116, that says that before any additional positions is established, the director's schools will present to the board the job description, the qualifications, performance responsibilities, and how that person will be evaluated in performance. So, that's what this position is. Now, let me back up and say this. Under number seven section of your board packet, Shane brought out to me earlier that this, there is a statement there that is not typed in right, and that is a statement that is from me, it's all on me, that where it begins about line eight or nine, where it says, "This position will be funded." This position that we are talking about today, for the board to consider approval for the position, is actually funded through general purpose funds. It's not federal. We have shifted some federal funds to support where currently it's being paid out of GP. So, to reflect positively what she says here in her cover letter, is there's no additional funds required in the GP. It's a wash. Funds are being moved out of GP to fund this position, because funds that are currently being used in GP to fund existing positions will be funded out of federal funds. So, it's going to be a wash on the expense. But I am supporting this direction. We're going to test the waters to see how it goes for this year. We're talking about a year commitment at this time. We will see after this year of the success for this position in the future.
Okay, if you'd like to make an opening statement here. Anything that you'd like to say about this, then we'll ask a few questions.
Yes. It's okay. In my former life, and this is where this idea kind of came from, particularly after being at school for this whole year, I was the dean of student life at Freed Hartman University. One of the opportunities I had is to help grow children, and they weren't children, I know, but when you're older and they're 18, they seem like children. One of the things that I'm seeing at the junior high right now is an atmosphere of students who want to lead, and they want to have those opportunities to be great leaders. And we have a lot of that that can happen at the school, but it needs to be in an organized manner. We are trying to be able to be a foundation for the high school in order for there to be these great people like this right here. We want to make sure that we're setting the tone correctly at our school for that. And so, because of the experiences I've had as looking at the junior high, seeing a whole gap, a place where there's a need, and this title and this job description fits that. Mr. Kiltzer did not put in to the notes, and I'm a little disappointed, to be honest with you. I had a picture of a penguin. But he did! Mr. Kiltzer, I just want you to know right now.
You apologize.
I apologize right now, because I thought you did not put my penguin in there, and I was going to be completely, totally hurt. One of the things that Mr. Kiltzer has.
You can make it right later.
Yeah, I'll bring you a shiny crown later on.
There you go.
One of the things that Mr. Kiltzer has encouraged me to do this year is to read. And so.
It's a new skill.
It is a new skill, for me in particular, not really, but he has encouraged that, and he's recommended books along the way. But one of the books that I have just completed reading is actually a fable, and it's called "Our Iceberg Is Melting," and it's incredible. But it's about a set of empire penguins, and this empire penguin goes swimming, and he's really not an effective part of the group, he's really not a leader, and he goes swimming, and he realizes that the iceberg is melting, and it's melting from the inside out, and none of the other birds who are in charge are willing to do anything about it at all. But one of the big elements that's in here, and this book is all about how to implement change within your organization, and it talks about the eight most important steps in order to do that. And one of the biggest ones that's in there is that you cannot do it by yourself, that you have to have a group of people that surround you, that are better at you at things, so that they bring and they add more to it, so that you make sure that you make a difference. And so, that's why this position is here. It's not for me, it's for our students, giving them an opportunity and a person to be there that supports that positive end of behavior, that positive end of growth as far as our students are concerned, and the junior high desperately needs to have that in order to set a good foundation for us going to high school. That's it. You can ask me whatever you want to, and I'll do the best I can to kind of answer it. Yes, sir.
The person that gets this position, describe to me what their day would be like. What they would start out, and, you know, just describe what their day would be like.
One, they'll be teaching a class, which is very important, not just to me, but it's something that Mr. Kiltzer and I have had a good conversation about. They'll be teaching as part of our eighth grade program. We've had what's called the REACH program, which has been rather ineffective this year, and so, we are reworking that curriculum so that it meets the need that it was supposed to when it got started. It's more of an elective type of a course, and it's to prepare students to get ready for high school and make good decisions about what they want to do with their lives. We all know how education has become. My child is going to be a senior this year at the high school, and he will spend zero time on the campus at the high school. So, we're talking about an age of children who eighth grade is really more like their freshman year, really probably more like their, you know, it's really unreal to me what is happening with that. So, our eighth grade year has become more like that freshman year, so we want to set that tone. So, the person who receives the job will be teaching a class, and it has to be a pretty creative class, one that reaches, for example, we've done a creative writing one, we've had one that's done some application where they learn computer programming. We've done one, was talking to them about Good Morning CCJHS, where they learned videography, so it just kind of opens some different doors for the students there. So, one, that person would be teaching a class. Two, the person would be working on the positive aspect of behavior, and I hesitate to use the word discipline, because that has a negative connotation to it, but then the behavior ends up it. You will find at the junior high that there's a great need for somebody to be in the classrooms with the teachers promoting some positive behavior, and also helping our teachers with that in the classroom. We have a lot of students this year who've missed a lot of class time for being in the school suspension, and if we can have somebody who has that positive end of it, can be in that classroom, watch that child, see what's happening, and make a behavior plan for them and try to help out with that part of it. That is a huge part of it, is bridging that gap, so that we have less that's missing class and more that's actually in class participating in it. This person, too, would also be working with our clubs and our organizations. We have many of them at school, and a lot of them are being student-generated. They have a great desire to, Good Morning CCJHS is another prime example of it. They begin that this year, it's like Good Morning America, it's something they wanted to start themselves, and at the conclusion of the year, I was telling them about this, the two spokespersons came up to me and they said, "We need to interview the people for next year, so that you'll be prepared for that." And I said, "Okay." And they went around and collected 30 names of students that were wanting to be part of this program, then they came back and looked at me and said, "We need to narrow this down, because it says 10 new people." And I said, "All right, how are you going to do that?" And they said, "Well, it has to be academic and behavior," and they narrowed it down to 12, they did interviews, and this has all come from us setting a group of students where they were able to be leaders. And that is another huge part of it, is making sure that our clubs and organizations aren't just, we hang out for school one time, or we get to go to the strawberry festival, because we've been in our club all year long, and now we get to go to the strawberry festival. It's more, it's where they're actually having those leadership roles in that. This person also will be testing coordinator, which does not fulfill an entire year, I know this year it did for some testing coordinators, but it does fulfill a huge role in there, and also to look at some of the data-driven pieces of that and be able to share it with the faculty and to work with them. So, it's a pretty big role when you look at it, you think about it, that it really blends itself in together, and it's all looking at the student life of the junior high, understanding the culture, and making sure that we're building a culture where our iceberg is, when it is melting, we know when to move off of it, to find a new place to be, and to move forward, and how we make that appropriate change to stay in tune with our students. And I think there's a lot of things at the junior high where we haven't moved ourselves forward, listening to our students and meeting some of the needs that they have. listening to our students and meeting some of the needs that they have.
Thank you. Chris, what about the teacher power? Have you told them, "Okay, we're looking for this position and they're gonna be in the classroom helping you and are they really buying into this, really excited about it, I hope?"
Well, let me tell you about my staff. And of course, I'm sure you would like to leave before midnight tonight. So I will try to stay within my, probably not one of my lowest qualities is shortened speech in that. I'm gonna be really honest with you. I've, this faculty is unreal. They are some of the hardest-working and most dedicated people that you will ever meet. And I don't know that everybody's ever thought of the junior high that way. I know that Coach Eads has and he knows because he's been there. But if you haven't been there, I don't know that people's perception of the junior high isn't that. These people are hungry and they are hungry for change. That is evident in what they have done in one year's time and the morale and how it's changed what they chose to do. And so I don't ever put anything on a piece of paper or come to see Mr. Kiltzer with an idea before I have talked to content area leaders or talked to some of the high rollers, I guess you would call them, at the school to kinda see and ask them and say, "Do you think this is something our school could need? How would you feel about it? What do you think about it?" Our teachers want people to be in the classroom. That in my evaluation this year, that was one of my lowest categories, was that I was not present in their classroom enough this year for them and they want me to be there more. So to answer that question, they, they want it. They want people to be in there. That's the kinda culture and climate we are building.
You know, I mean, she said she might everything, you know, that I could think of. And after I read it, I wasn't real sure why I would need that.
Yes, sir.
But, I mean, I don't see a problem in, you know, giving it a try. And after a year, if it looks good, then we can. Don't eat. I make a motion. We create that position second.
I have a motion, second, we create the Director of Student Life position. Any other discussion? All in favor of that? I propose no, that is approved. Thank you very much.
I appreciate that.
I will say I appreciate your concept of view because we keep doing things as the way we've always done. If you're gonna give the same as-
Or iceberg's gonna melt and we're gonna have places for the House Committee to have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda, which has been the approval of the first draft of General Purpose and Federal Program budget.
There it is, yes. Yes, correct. Yes, yes. Earlier today, we had a meeting with our Policy and Finance Committee consisting of Shane Connor, Mr. Glenn Naylor, Stacy Keen, and myself. We went through the packet of information, again, that you gentlemen have in your packet. And the conversation coming out of the committee is that the first draft out of committee is approved.
So we make a motion out of the committee that we approve the first draft of the budget.
A couple of questions I want to ask.
I have a motion and discussion.
You got discussion because coming out of the committee, there's no need for a second. So go right into discussion.
On the first page here, it says fund balance estimated, is that after the management pool for that construction?
You're talking about that 7-1-2018, 4.833. Remember the dollar amount that we had set aside for the projects, 1.8. 1.8. We have through Varga Construction, we're paying out approximately $500,000 in this fiscal year. The remaining balance is gonna be rolling back into the fund balance of 1.4. But after July 1, when this budget is approved and becomes active, then that fund balance is gonna come back out, out of the fund balance into that lineup for capital projects. You see that reflected on this page, which is number, well, there's no page number on nine.
This is the first bullet in the overall changes.
Yeah, the second page after it, estimated 1.4 million dollars from fund balance for addition to the high school. The money, since we're not gonna spend all of that money now before the fiscal year ends, what we're not spending goes back, goes into fund balance. But the way this budget is set up, that 1.4 will go back after July 1. Reflected there. It's also in your general purpose budget. You see a reverse of the fund balance for 18, 19. I'm on this first page here. It comes after, it's the first page, it has general purpose budget at the top. If you look under account number and it's-
Seventy-six, one hundred.
If you look under fourteen, one hundred, total revenues right below that, the reverse fund balance, there's that 1.4 million coming back out of fund balance into that lineup.
So basically Dwight, that will come off of that 4.8. You'll deduct 1.4 million on July 1st, once this is approved.
That's why it's harder than where it was.
Right, it would be, it would be deducted from that. So, but this is how the state requires us to tell you what the fund balance is on July 1st.
So inevitably, it will become 3.4 million, which is right there at the threshold of what we have to maintain in our fund balance for our funding needs and for our three percent.
On page five. On other salaries. Estimated budget for seventeen, eighteen was a hundred and eighty and it's going to five thousand.
That's in your bullet points on the summary page. If you look under seven-one-one-oh, regular instruction, it says RTI positions moved from seventy-two-one-oh-one-eighty-nine to seven-one-one-oh-oh dash one sixteen per the Tennessee Department of Education. So it just moved.
Okay.
It moved from there.
That's important.
Yeah, the reason why we left the five thousand dollars there is because with the schools' mini-grants, sometimes they pay stipends to the teachers. So we left a little bit there. But the RTI positions, they requested we move them to a teacher lineup instead of other salaries. So that is on that page where it tells you the overall changes. That's listed on there under regular instruction. And again, that's where it moved to. And then again, under seven-two-two-one-oh, it says RTI positions moved from that lineup to seven-one-one-oh-oh-one-sixteen.
See, if you go back to page three, under seventy-one, one hundred, one sixteen, you notice that our budget for current seven million, two hundred and eighty-five thousand is moving up to seven million, three hundred and nineteen. It's not as obvious there.
Do I get your numbers in?
No. The numbers are close together. On page eight. Maintenance and repair bill. Forty-five to a hundred.
If you look on your first page of your bullet points again, it lists that for maintenance of plants, we had been paying some of those costs out of capital improvements. And per audit, they have asked us if it's just a maintenance item, to move it to maintenance. So it's the second from the bottom bullet point where I list the major changes. So we just took what we had been paying out of capital improvements and moved it to maintenance because it really is maintenance instead of a capital improvement.
Yeah.
Just historically, it's been being paid out of capital improvement.
But that's, that is by the auditors.
Yes, that was auditor request. Because they like to tie those capital projects to fixed assets. And just, you know, a seven thousand dollar repair to a bathroom, which we're currently doing, is not really gonna be tied to an asset, yeah. So they requested we move that.
Well, insurances.
And is that actual numbers now or do we actually know? I didn't fact the hit yet.
Even the state has not even put out actual numbers for their premium yet. I was attending a meeting on May the first. And of course, I know today's May the fifteenth, but I have not heard that they do put their numbers out yet. So no, we just budgeted for budgeting.
More.
Well, it could go up more. Yeah, it could, but as far as the portion that we budgeted to cover, we budgeted it as a two percent increase.
Now, the state has advertised that they're only planning across all of theirs collectively three percent increase from the state plan. We don't know about it. We, our private plan, we are going to allow our, the income for our, I'm trying to think, Cigna, couldn't think of Cigna's name. Right now, we wanted to see that after a three more month window, what type of premium options we're gonna have. We wanna have, you know, our claims, if our claims are close to what we're paying in, the premium cost is gonna be higher. The expectation is after three more months of allowing the income to be higher than the claims coming out, that we're gonna get a better premium.
And we never have actual numbers on the insurances early.
That's why I thought that's-
Because, I mean, they're looking at numbers for 2019, starting in January of 2019. So they never have concrete numbers at this time of the year in 2018. It's much later in the year before we actually get better numbers. But we have to budget somewhere, we have to talk somewhere.
But I just saw a pretty good hit.
Any other discussion, any other questions?
Changes and amendments to budget lifetimes?
That's, that's, can't do the consensus.
What kind of bores are we buying?
The ones that we can afford. We will have to bid that out.
Well, that's why I-
Or go through a, I think we're going through buy board or going through one of our-
We can go through a cooperative.
Cooperative, right.
To commercial, each commercial lower affects him down to, each could be one of the less. That's how much you're currently paying. Currently this year, keeping up the three dollars that we have that are in, should we pay about seventy-five hundred dollars in repairs?
Only thing then, if we find through the buy board, which I'm all for, are the local people who want to work on it or do warranty work if we have warranty work.
They'll have to do warranty work.
No, they don't have to.
They wanna be a part of the, selling that distributor, they will have to.
No, they cannot force them to. We run into that.
Well, we got somebody that speaks on our numbers, it's not either.
Well, I mean, the warranty part's what I, you know.
I don't really know if you would, but.
What, what, first, we're looking at through the buy board?
Yeah, there's Exmar, Toro, and Ferris on there. We're just studying which ones we can get.
Are you looking at ones that we need or not?
I don't know, they have it out there. That's just a matter of attachment.
Well, you had some, it's through Ferris, I know, you can get in on Ferris. And then you said it was much rounder. We'd make that check.
We have a motion, second. Okay, all in favor of approving this position, the first draft, if you're pleased, say aye.
Aye.
I propose no, that is approved. Okay, the next thing was, probably we can discuss with Mr. Eads about that.
Well, it said there is a, another purchasing cooperative that we are seeking to be a part of. Again, this is with the County Commission. But we would entertain approval from the Board to consider adding this to cooperative. Again, it does provide us a good quality price for products that are within that, just like with buy board, without the requirement of going through the bidding process. This has been recommended by multiple people, including Stephen Watkins and-
It's how you get training units at cast without having to-
Right. And Heather Griffin also had mentioned it to Stacy because in her conversation with some other coordinate school health folks, that they have been a part of and found it beneficial for their history. So we've had two different others to advocate that this is a good purchasing group to be a part of.
Make a motion. Get on the floor.
Second, we approve the purchasing cooperative, any other discussion? All in favor of that?
Aye.
I propose no, that is approved.
It did? Yeah. We have a, again, going with the next section of Section 10 of your plan. From the last meeting where we shared that in your update section, we have had a conversation today with the Policy and Finance Committee about pursuing a bond for some of these projects that we have had come to our attention. We've had that as early as, well, earlier than January. We've had some who have presented themselves before the Board. We've had a conversation at the Board Training Session about some of these projects. And again, based on where we are with our fund balance, our fund balance currently, if this budget goes through, would only satisfy our needs to maintain. We would have to wait for any of these projects until our fund balance got above the threshold of where it would be. So again, the research has been done. We have sought out, or Stacy has sought out, three different groups. Information that you have in your Board Packet reflects two of the groups, or three of the groups. We have local government pool that we learned from County Mayor as a suggestive group to seek out. And Stacy has spoken to them. We also have had conversations with Duncan Williams. That's information that's been included with you gentlemen earlier. And then also with, what was the third one?
Cumberland.
Cumberland Securities. Because the county has used Cumberland Securities in the past as a bonding group. Today, we had an opportunity, not only with the local Board Committee, but we also had opportunity to approach the County Commission's Budget Committee. There was no action taken at their committee, but they did support us to have that conversation before the full committee Monday night. But it was discussed coming out of our project committee.
Do we have any other discussion on that? It was recommended to be-
Well, when the Policy and Finance Committee makes a motion, we pursue the bond, not to exceed 1.8 million.
Can we say bond or capital note because they are two different?
Two different.
Okay. Can pursue a bond or a capital note, not to exceed 1.8 million? For the purpose of capital projects.
Any other discussion or question? All in favor of pursuing this, say aye. I propose no. I think that is approved.
You wanna speak anything about the, about the request for approval? I mean, proposal for the proof that middle school?
As of right now, lots of acres had, probably visits to the site, so we're gonna have several items safely in. Now, do it in request for proposal. We're not putting a spec out, we're asking for proposals from vendors so they-
Options on what?
Options that we can choose, you know, not only on price, but we can also look at quality, warranty, timeliness of getting it on there. So it gives us a lot of room as opposed to a spec bid where everybody has to-
Which part of middle school are you?
It's the auditorium. It's that front building across that-
The whole, old?
Except for the gym, yeah, everything but the gym.
There was that old, the whole main. There wasn't a picture in there that said that?
It, I've got it on the website if you want to-
Well, it was in the-
Did anybody else get it?
But I'll get you the picture. It's the main, it's the main campus, it was included in that file. We'll get you that.
None of the detachments.
Okay, that's what I was getting.
Everything but the gym, the main detachment from auditorium all the way to the other end. That'll be the twenty-second, we'll accept on it then. We don't have, we don't go public over it.
I'll print it for you in color.
Because it was outlined in red. And I had requested to be printed in color, so it would-
I mean, it didn't spell out like part of it. I mean, it didn't spell out like part of it and, and, yes, and then, well, the intent was-
And the copyright. I'll make sure you get it.
Well, no, it's fine, I should, yeah, but it's the main.
It's on the website, if you want to open it, it's in the documents.
I can make it though.
No, I know now.
That's probably solid.
It's easy enough. It's always easy. That's all I think, we'll take it.
Is, anybody else on board, got anything?
What, what we wind up with on a HVAC deal, bid or maintenance?
R M.
The lower, we had fifty-five dollars per unit vehicle down there. How many negotiations?
That's cheap.
Yes.
I paid more than that on my home.
Yeah, but you got one thing, then all the units are in line on one building with everything that's our biggest need versus dropping from house to house and they can just throw nine one house on that. Got you. We had bids from, his was fifty-five, we had one for sixty-five, one for sixty-nine, fifty, and then everything else is over a hundred dollars. Our break point was fifty to sixty dollars before we were going to have to make another decision, you know, amount of money, not hire it back.
Now, any parts they find that's over and above.
It is above and beyond, all they're going to do is clean the coils, check their hoses up, check freon levels, look at all the, make sure the, you know, things that are tight to be checked, the belts, they'll put a filter in. And they've done, now he's put in his thing, he said if it needs freon, if we will put the freon on the building, they'll put it in for free. Anything behind it above it, heat exchanger, so forth, it'll be negotiated, which our guys can do, heat exchangers, as long as we have time, we'll do most of the maintenance ourselves.
And expedites is because you've got trained people doing the work.
I hadn't heard you have. But it's five is cheap.
I think he said more, I can make it up on, you know, if there's things to fix and get rid of.
All right.
Anybody else on board, anything? In our next board meeting, we'll be on Thursday, June, for the first, when they take, they'll vote for the draft.
Like the most with James.
All in favor, say aye.
Got you, second.